Our Town, Our TV. Amherst City Cable.
I've called over the Technology Committee on March 2nd, 2015 at 7 o'clock. We'll call and vote. Steve, that's me. Dave Goodell.
Here.
Dave Janik.
Here.
Joe Miller.
Present.
Mr. Van Troyen.
Here.
Mrs. Wassel.
Here.
Mr. Winarski.
Here.
And the Chair is also present. I entertain a motion to Mr. Costello, if I being here. Mrs. Wassel.
A motion to excuse Safety Services Detective Costello from the meeting this night. I understand he has some note on his.
Second judge. Of course, it's second to excuse Mr. Costello from tonight's meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I have one agenda item this evening. A-1510. It's the authorization to enter into two memorandums of understanding for county-wide public safety data sharing solution and declaring an emergency. This is brought to us by the Mayor and also Police Chief Gicharik. Mr. Mayor, would you like to say something?
No, I defer to the Chief.
Excellent.
Good evening. Like the Vucak said, I want to talk to you about a couple of MLUs that you have in your mailbox that deal with a county-wide public safety data sharing solution or network, if you will. What I'll talk about are the history of how we think to be and kind of where it's at today and what we expect to go in the future. So as we move along, I'll stop if you have any questions. I'll alternate them at a time or maybe put them in. But historically, all the cities in our counties, on township, have a different records management system. Several years ago, several police chiefs got together and wanted to wait to be able to share information a lot quicker than what we do now. Not information that might be in a need terminal or a database information that say he would have access to part of the sheriff's department, Wellington, or Sheffield Village, or Avon, or Lorraine, or Sheriff's Department. So through many meetings, a several companies, the vendors were looked at and the county came up with a vendor who's the name of New World. Who were the name of the particular vendor that was a part of the management. This project that I'm speaking of has literally been underway since 2012. And as of late, they've been building this project, the software and hardware have been installed. The county has signed a contract with New World back in the summer of 2013. Now, mind you, this project started off a little bit smaller than what it is today with only a few slight police agencies and has kind of grown to include everybody in the county. So the county saw the need that instead of a few agencies having the same records management system, that it would benefit the entire county to have the same records management system and everybody share the information that we all have separately. Not being able to share information, when I say we don't share information, I don't mean that we, if somebody calls us up, another police agency calls us up and says, can you send us a booking photo of so-and-so? Or can you send us a report on so-and-so? We would do that. We'd either do it over the telephone or the next day we'd go to records and they would send the information over. It wouldn't be real-time information that they would be getting from us. So part of the problem that we're trying to solve here is by giving the patrol officers and dispatchers that information that every police agency input into their system, but putting it into one central system. The benefit of doing that, obviously, is to give the patrol officers on the street and the dispatchers that are working that real-time information. The quicker we can get real-time information to them, the better and more effective they are at doing their jobs and serving the residents of our city and our community. How is this going to benefit the City of Amherst? First, it's going to give us a solid records management system for 10 years. The county signed a contract with New World for 10 years and we're being asked to sign a memorandum of understanding with Lorraine County to be on board with the sharing of our information with this records management system. As I stated earlier, it will give the police officers that are out there on the streets and the dispatchers that are working that real-time information that can be critical at times. And for us individually, for our city, it will, the records management system that we use now, nobody else in the county uses. Everybody usually has something different. We have our own and we have about six or seven modules that this company offers and we pay a good price in maintenance fees for those modules. What the county has negotiated with New World is to have probably triple the number of modules that we have now. So not only will it benefit us by sharing information, I brought in some of them on my, on my letter to you. Some of the things are proximity dispatching. Through this technology, a dispatcher will be able to see, once a call gets put in, which police car is actually physically closer to that address and dispatch that car to the address. Instead of rotating or taking turns, they'll physically be able to send a call, a car that's closest to that address by knowing where the actual police car is at, knowing where the call is. Techometry mapping. The county's working with the county GIS department to import the telemetry. So not only can an officer that's closest to the address go, but they can actually send a screen in his car and as a computer where that house is located and how many houses it is from the corner. Oftentimes, I hear on the radio when guys are going to a call, give me a house count from the corner. And the dispatcher has to go to another system and usually the 911 system and give them a house count from the corner. This system will eliminate that and they'll be able to see it right on their screens and that will be basically a road map right to the house. Some of the other modules that will, New World will bring to us are the booking modules. While we have a booking module with our current vendor, it's not a full-scale model of module. And the booking module that we will have access to will be the same booking module that the Sheriff's Department uses, that Lorraine uses, that the Labor uses, that our original uses, Avon, and everybody that has the city jail. We will all use the same booking module, something we don't have today. This will also give us a 911 interface ability. When a call comes in on 911, there will be an interface that the information that's coming from the 911 screen from the dispatcher over at the county can be imported right into the call itself. So the dispatcher doesn't have to retype everything when it finally gets to our dispatchers. Data analysis and crime mapping, something we don't have now. And interface with our LEED system. LEEDs is, of course, the information where everybody's driver's license information is kept, some on the dispatcher ones, somebody through our LEEDs network, which is a LEEDs or a PRISIT, as I referred to earlier. That information can be copied and pasted right into this system. So it'll be an interface, so they don't have to retype everything, again, the height, the way, address. It'll be copied and pasted into the New World system. One of the biggest advantages to going to New World is the GPS technology that it allows us to have. Of course, GPS devices have to be put in the cars. But the dispatcher will be able to see where all the cars are at. Not only will the dispatcher be able to see where all of our cars are at, but they'll be able to see each other. And this is critical at times of pursuit, of setting up a perimeter, and things like that, where just no one, like I said, who's closest to a particular call. So that technology is built into this New World system, again, something that we don't have currently. The cost to the system. What's it going to cost the City of Amherst to go with this system? We will incur some costs that are outside of our current city police department budget for going with the New World vending system. Some of those costs I've outlined for you, there's an Excel sheet in your packet. I'll run down some of them quickly, but the total cost is just under $93,000. Right now, we are a little bit short on our MDTs and our cards. We haven't been replacing them in anticipation of going with this software and not wanting to buy MDTs a year or two ago, not knowing what the specifications were going to be. So I didn't spend one two years ago and then have to buy a laptop computer all over again to meet the specifications of this project. We now know what those specifications are and my proposal is to put an MDT in all of the patrol cars. Two MDTs and two mounting platforms of keyboards have already been donated to the police department. So on my hotline, I'm asking for eight MDTs and seven keyboards and 11 CR modems. And that price for that is about $48,000. There was also some other fees on my Excel sheet here. Some of those are data conversion fees. Our current system has about $95,000 names in it. If we didn't convert that data over to New World, we would have, the dispatcher would have to basically run two systems. And there was a, the chiefs got together and asked what can be done about data conversion. And Mr. Cordez went back to New World and negotiated a price on behalf of everybody. And so we're not going to convert all our data, but we're going to convert the important parts. Our data names, the addresses, the warrants, the cautions, social security numbers, things like that. Narratives won't be converted if we want a narrative from our old system, we'll still have it, they're available to us. Evidence conversion. Right now, we're currently using a whole different system for our evidence. We have about 40,000 pieces of evidence in our evidence room right now. That's on a totally separate system. New World has its own evidence module. So it's about $3,000 to convert or transfer all of our data from our evidence module into this module. There's also some additional expense in mounting this equipment, the MDTs and the modems and cars that we currently have. And some miscellaneous hardware issues that we have to address, like scanners for the evidence, label printers for the evidence. Booking room cameras that every police department buys the same booking camera and uses the same background. When we import pictures into the system, they'll all look the same. You wouldn't be able to look at the database and decide this is a Lorraine picture, this is an Amherst picture, because they're all going to look the same. And that's important to us when we do photo lineups, you don't want photos to look different from each other. So the whole cost for that is about $93,000. There's also some maintenance fees that the county has negotiated in their memorandum of understanding. The total maintenance fees for the contracts that the county signs is a little over $350,000. Right now, we're paying about, just under $18,000 for our maintenance fees to our vendors. The county's going to pay about $350,000. Well, that's what they are, they're going to divide it. The county's going to pay half, they have. And the cities that come on board with this are going to pay the other half based on the sum of options that they have. So in the back of the packet, on page 23, you can see that our maintenance fees for the first year will be about a little over $15,000. So there's savings in maintenance fees, however, we expect our other fees to go up. For Horizon, we pay mobile data terminal fees for four or five cars now and now we'll be paying for twice that now. So it's almost an offset to the savings that we would have under the maintenance agreement. But it shouldn't cost any more. There's an MLU in your packet from the county when we were talking about the cost of what it cost our city to switch over to the New World solution and to join the county. I knew that part of this was going to be the microwave system that was going to be in place to get the data from a police department's building over to the county 911 center through their microwave system. So back when we did our radio room upgrade and we switched from analog radios to digital radios, at that time, I proposed to switch to digital, which meant installing our own microwave at our own expense. And that did two things for us. It allowed us, our radios to operate a whole lot better than what they did, a lot quieter, a lot clearer. But it also would have gave us the option to join the county through the data transmission, not only the voice, but the data. What I didn't know at the time was that the county was going to supply microwave links to all the cities who were interested in joining their New World system. So we already paid about, just a little under $40,000 for our microwave links to clean our police department and the water tower, and the water tower to the 911 tower. And I asked Mr. Cordez if he would be willing to reimburse us for that money. And he agreed to reimburse us $20,000, which I feel was appropriate considering that he worked with all microwaves in our city. It's simply go from the police department tower right to the 911 tower. And that's about a $20,000 link. So we paid $40,000 for two links between the police department and the water tower. That was $20,000. And then the water tower to, then the 911 tower was another $20,000. So if he were to do it all over again, we would just go straight from the police department right to the 911 tower. So he agreed through a memorandum to reimburse us $20,000, basically give us $20,000 back. He also has committed to helping any city within reason financially to do what he can to offset any costs like data conversion fees or equipment fees and things like that. So in conversations with Mr. Cordez, I asked him for a $73,000 loan to cover the balance of this $93,000 project. And he readily agreed, did not have a problem with it, was very good to work with, was very eager to see us be on board as well as any other city that wanted to come on board. So he drafted an MLU, included the $20,000 reimbursement for the microwave system. Mr. Pacora wanted me to include a description of that microwave equipment that we are, will be transferring to them. So we did it through the invoices that we paid and that's why the invoices are attached to your paperwork. So particularly described the equipment that the county will be taking over and paying any maintenance fees on, paying any repairs on. If there's a problem with any of the microwaves from that point forward, then the county pays for it, not the city. And then the MLU also explains that the five-year loan for $73,000 is, will be paid. The cash will be made available to us by April 1st. But this year, doesn't have to be repaid until the first payment of April 1st until next year and then apply equal payments after that. So my agenda request, the very last page simply outlines, the City of Amherst signed the MLU allowing participation in a county-wide public safety sharing solution. The City of Amherst accepts the $20,000 reimbursement from the county and uses those funds to offset the necessary police upgrade, as outlined. The City of Amherst signs the MLU for the $73,000 loan from the county and repaid the loan over five years, interest-free, starting April 1st, 2016. The city makes temporary funds available from the capital account, which I outlined on my agenda request, prior to April 1st of this year, 2015. So we can order equipment without any unnecessary delays. And that the City of Amherst passes legislation with the emergency clause for two important reasons. First one is, as I said earlier, the data conversion was negotiated on a global level. So the vendor, New World, is looking at it as one project. They gave us a price from $40,000, was the original price that paperwork's in here, down to $17,655. But we had to do it as a group. And we're one of the last people to have the MLU back at the county. So as soon as we get our MLU back at the county, that data conversion process will start, which is, as you can imagine, a huge undertaking for the vendor. The go-live date for this is August 31st of this year. That every police department is going to go live within the New World system. So that's how far along we are, but we're still a long ways off. The data conversion is going to be a monumental task for this vendor. So as soon as they can start on that, the vendor off will be. The second reason I'm asking for the emergency clause is, again, to get equipment ordered as soon as I possibly can. I have a couple of cars that aren't ordered. I have one that just came in. And during the build of those vehicles, the equipment was there, the modems and the computers and things like that. It was there at the time of the build. It'd be a lot less expensive to do it now, when the crews are building the car, than it would be to bring the crew back, like I have to already for some of the other cars. But there's a premium price that we're paying because they have to come back and refit cars with some equipment. But that's, there's really no way around that. So that's in summary of what the New World project will entail for us. Of course, this is what I know to date on this. There may be some things down the road that I outlined, things that we have thought of. There's a little bit of buffer that I put into my $93,000 project to pay for things that probably we're just not thinking of yet that will come up. And if it doesn't, then we don't have to spend the money and it just goes back to the county. But there's a little bit of buffer in there, but there also are some projects that could come down the road a couple of years from now. Digital ticket, writing tickets electronically from your car, the system is capable of doing that, license plate re-ears. It's almost endless of what the system will do. But I'll toss money in, it depends on how many people get involved and what county they want to do and things like that. So in summary, that's the two agenda requests for the two MLUs that are for you. And I'll, and any questions if anybody has any.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you also for making that a summary, not anything in detail. I also think that you gave the opportunity to sit down with you last week and describe the project and like Chief Gicharik did say, this is going to be a huge undertaking for conversion of the database and the actual costs that we're actually incurring for the city. This is actually a really good deal and I'd like to commend not only yourself, but your peers in negotiating and putting together a very complete package. And your presentation to us, I thought was very complete as well. Mrs. Wassel?
Yes, thank you, Chief. My question is a question as to form, and it's actually for the Law Director. Mr. Pacora, I just want you to confirm that this only requires one piece of legislation. Is that correct, even though there are two memoranda?
I think we could do one piece of legislation.
Okay, I just want to make sure that, because it seems like there's a lot of stuff and if it turns out we need more than one piece of legislation, we can still move to take this package to the floor of council when you can prepare the additional between now and the council.
That's correct.
Okay, that answers my question. With that, I move to take this to the floor of council with the emergency.
Mr. Goodell?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Chief, you had mentioned that for sharing information among, between the departments. Can you give me an example or explain what type of information that would be that would be shared?
Basically, anything that is in our current system now that we house and anything that is in any other agency's system that they house would all be in one system. If an agency chooses not to convert their data and go back and grab data from their current system, put it into the New World system, then that's what everybody will have access to. There are some agencies that aren't going to do that because they're not big enough to have a lot of data and so they are choosing not to convert their data or, I mean, it's not official for us to convert our data. But the, one of the big examples is a police officer that's on the street that is managing false identification from somebody. If he wants a mugshot of that person that isn't in the system, but we don't have it and say, North Bridgeville has it. He'll have that in his car, just as simply as you would fit those arms, because they'll be coming out of the same network. If there are, if the officer ran a call of a domestic in our city and he sees the names of the two people involved in the domestic and two months down the road, those same two people are in a domestic in Wellington. That Wellington officer will see, you guys are just in a domestic in the City of Amherst two months ago. Enjoy that information. More importantly, cautions and cautions that are associated with vehicles, cautions that are associated with people, and cautions that are associated with locations. Everybody will have access to that. So if they run a license plate in their car, that, we put a lot of cautions on people locally or license plates or locations. That doesn't mean that if the Sheriff's Department ran the same license plate we did, they would see a caution because we have a different system. They'll be able to see our caution right there in the car at the time.
Does this sound like this is more for like a safety, officer's safety and the, you know, obviously, the citizens as well?
This is really about the patrol officers on the street, you can give them the information that they need to do their job effectively and safely.
So this information is something that can be obtained other than through this, but it would be faster to get it?
Some of it, no. Before a police officer stops a vehicle, he doesn't call the dispatcher and say, can you check all the surrounding agency's precautions? That's just impractical of him. So he'll have that as his fingertips before he stops the car.
It's much quicker. Correct. Obviously, the information is going to be ready at 5:30.
Go ahead, thank you.
Mr. Jack?
Thank you, Chief. Couple of questions with the go-live date being in August with the two separate systems. Is there any maintaining of both systems until the go-live date or?
We, our current system, our current vendor, we have told them that we are canceling our maintenance agreement as of August 31st. So the money we have budgeted for them will simply be transferred to the county. We'll, in your memorandum, I think on page 22, 21, there's a dollar amount to cover a quarter of 2015, which I think is around $2,000 for us. And we'll still have our current vendor and our computers, but as time goes on, we'll rely on that less and less. So we will have the current vendor's information, but we won't be paying maintenance agreements on it, which is one of the issues that some agencies had with this and why there was so much talk about it. And to make sure that police departments can put themselves in a position to not pay two vendors at one time. So that's, that was a big part of how this is being formulated.
And will there be training involved with the new system that, in terms of costs?
Yes, the training, I budgeted for the build teams. We have two people that have been integral part of the build teams, but there is going to be training. When we built our police department in 1997, we had one system. We switched in like 1999. There was training for that. So there will be training, that's all included in the contract that the county signed with New World. But of course, when we send our people, the dispatchers, as I understand it, are going to have to be trained through, I think, four hours a day for five days. And then the other aspects of the system that the police officers will be using or administrators or detectives, that will be a train to train. So we'll send people to that training, train them, and then I'll come back and train our people.
Thank you.
Mr. Van Troyen?
When officers access this information, do they access it from a common, single database where all different cities uploaded that information or is it accessed directly from the city? So in other words, if a city were to drop out of the program, would that cut off the information from that city or is it all accumulated in one location?
Good question. The county is providing these servers at a, the servers in redundancy to the servers, basically two of these exact same systems. And that's being housed in a county building. And all the data that an individual agency puts into there is their data. They can get it back anytime they want. So say 10 years down the road, we didn't want to be part of it, we could always have our data back. The way the system's being designed is, it's keeping the information separate, but if you choose to look at somebody else's data, that's a click of a mouse and you can see all the evidence that we store data.
Oh, good.
So you don't go along with 50 rap sheets if you don't want to see them. You can just look at your rap sheet or you can look at everybody's rap sheet that's in the system.
So I wasn't so concerned about us having the ability to pull that data back out of the system. I was concerned with, let's say, an officer tries to access this data and for whatever reason, another city's data isn't accessible. It's actually all stored in one big bucket from which they can pull it.
Correct.
All right, good, thank you.
But there's security devices built in. You can see who goes in and looks at data. You can see who prints data. If there is a fear, like some chiefs had, that a police officer from another city would pull a report out and share the information or do something with it, that's trackable. We can certainly see that. But it's no different than if a police officer called our departments and said, hey, I'm Officer Zonzo. From Department Zonzo, can you send me this information? We'd send it. So there's really no difference.
Oh, sure. I think it's a good thing that anyone has access to it anytime. I just, I'm encouraged to hear that there's speed involved there and redundancy so they can't be cut off from other departments. That's all.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a 10-year contract with RMS. Did that start in 2013?
I believe our MLU states that it starts the day that we sign down on here.
Okay. Because I think you said that some were already getting into this and earlier, we've already, the county's already started this and the contract, so we still have 10 more years.
The contract was signed by the county this summer 2013 and some police departments turned their MLUs in several months ago, as they gathered from the county.
So it'll be 10-year contract with the City of Amherst, not the contract with the county with?
Correct.
Okay, so we're under our own 10-year contract. And within that 10 years, all this equipment that we're spending this money on, what's the shelf life on this?
The M V Ts?
Correct.
Typically, the M V Ts in a police car last three to five years. If we get five years out of them, it's a miracle. Usually it lasts about three years because the, our old system was you have an M V T in a car, you bring it into the station at the end of the night, you dock it back in a different car if it's going out in a different car. They could drive, they could put a shell hard, things like that. So we were usually finding three to four years for an M V T. Having one in a car locked all the time should help that aspect of it. But there's still, it's still software and there's upgrades and things like that. So the life of a computer, if we can get five years out of it, which I hope we will. I'm sure there'll be issues along the way. This particular company that we're looking at for the M V Ts has a three-year no ball warranty. So if it does come out of the car and a guy drives over it, we can call them and ask them if they want or they fix it. So for the first three years, it's a no ball warranty on that M V T.
And when you get in a contract like that, you want to make sure that your contract's going, you know, putting all this equipment in and then if the contract is not renegotiated or we put all this equipment in, will it still be usable after? It sounds to me like the contract's going to outlast most of the equipment.
Will the equipment last? Is that what you mean?
It lives in the contract. So if we go into a contract and then decide not to renew it, are we going to be sitting, how much money will we have invested in equipment that we won't be using or will we be using?
The modems, as my understanding, will last probably ten years unless there's a problem with software. The mounts for the M V Ts, we shouldn't have to replace. The keyboards, we shouldn't have to replace again. If we're going to use a keyboard, if your desk's not, you know, you might have a problem with one. But the laptops will not last the 10 years. The laptop will probably have to be replaced four to five years down the road, I anticipate.
So what we're going to see is a larger capital outlay budget for this system on a three to five year basis cycle?
We could. Right now, the way we were doing it prior to this was we didn't buy all the M V Ts at one time. We rotated, either buy one a year, one or two a year, a couple in one year. Because of the way this is happening, we're buying all the M V Ts at one time. If something happens and we have to replace one of them in three years and the other one in six years or five years. So after this initial investment, there will be a rotation, but it will be closer together than what we've been doing. So yes, to answer your question, four or five years down the road, most likely all of the M V Ts that hadn't been replaced for one reason or another will have to be replaced.
But the way we're budgeted, it should still be there when it's time? It's not like you're going to come back and say, we need another 50 grand for M V Ts. In five years, they'll be in your normal cycle budget like you've been doing?
But we got to buy, if we had to buy all 10 M V Ts at one time and a price of an M V T is $2,000, $3,000, then that would be an expensive project through either capital outlay or we have to fund it somehow. But I anticipate having that to do that four or five years down the road.
I think the safety of the officers with this GPS system is key. I like everything that this does. Totally support that. I just wanted to grab a couple more questions for you. I think one of the biggest concerns most of people nowadays in this digital world where information's out there and people's privacy seems to never be protected. I noticed here that we're going to do a conversion on a variety of sources and every source that is, if I understand this, on the last page, one of two, two of two, at the very end of this document, where it says implementation services, investment data file conversions estimate. And then you have, you have $11,750 and that would be property, information on people who, their master vehicles, their master guns, master property, all but gun and vehicle, property storage and disposition, property chain of custody, property analysis results, property association to cases. And then you're asking for additional data conversion at 3,000 apiece and it looks like there's about 20 or so items. Gun permits, gun registration, mugshots, custom alerts, external documents, bicycle registration, animal licenses, all this pawn shop transactions. What is a protection of personal training, personnel training?
You're looking at page two of two, right?
Right, correct. Please, I was just-
Go back and look at page one of two.
Okay. It's on the backside of this, or front side of this. Right, it's on the last page, I got it.
Please, Chief, all that information that's being converted is data that you already currently have in your system. There's no privacy concerns, that's never going to leave the data conversion department that's going to actually do it for you, correct?
Yes and no. What you were looking at are individual items on the page two of two. If you look at page one of two, you should be looking at a page that says a price of $17,750 on there. Everything on that data conversion package will be included in our data conversion.
Okay.
Some things are not included on there. For example, our mugshots that we currently have will not be part of the package unless we wanted to spend another $3,000.
Are you asking for these?
Yes, that's it.
So you're asking for $3,000 for all 20?
No.
Okay.
The only $3,000 issue that I'm going to do is if you look at, where it says $3,000 each, if you look at additional modules from the single data source, and if you look at the fourth one down which says the word beast, the word effect?
Yes.
The beast is our evidence software. The beast, if you go back and look at my Excel sheet, it says on there, data conversion $17,675 and then evidence conversion $3,000.
Okay.
So the total evidence conversion or the total data conversion is lower than $20,000.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that you weren't asking to have $3,000 spent on all of these optional items. Just want to clarify that that's, that those are just things that you could, the system could provide for you, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
If we wanted to spend the money, we had those options.
Very good. So those were optional and these are not things you're asking for?
If you look at page two of 23, on the memorandum of emergency, it talks about full conversion option, which is the $17,000 with the additional one category of the evidence. Part of the actual M W.
Actual M W, okay.
Right there.
Okay. Very good.
Okay.
Good, that clarifies a lot. I appreciate you taking the time to page numbers a little, I mean.
Mr. Miller, do you have more questions?
Mr. Chair, I think we're, I'm good to go on this. I appreciate your time, appreciate your work on this and as always, appreciate your service in our city. Thank you.
Mr. Naruski?
Thank you, thank you. Just real briefly, if I understand correctly, we're asking, we're in the ballpark of about $20,000 a year that's going to be taken out of an account that generates about 113. So it won't even impact the balance that's already in this line item, if I'm understanding correctly? I mean, that's fantastic.
It's $15,000 a year.
Okay. And beyond that, you're doing it in an account that doesn't even cost taxpayers money, comes out of a fund. You negotiated a great price, you find a creative way to finance it and it's not impacting a government service or a local service. I think it's fantastic. I give tip of the cap to the administration and the police chief for pulling this off.
I try to make it as admirable as possible so we can have everybody on board and again, this is for those guys out there, whether you're in this city or another city. That's what this project is about.
Mr. Ramsey?
Chief, the only that is needed out of the capital outlay account prior to April 1, is that the 93?
No, basically, all I will really need is a P O with a number on it to make an order. The bill probably won't even come in before April 1st before the county-
Will it be 93?
No.
Okay, not close. And then how much prior to April 1? Tomorrow?
Yeah, the M V T order, it's not going to be any more than the sub total number one. It's not going to be any more than $5,000. That order alone, if I can get them on the M V Ts-
I just want to make sure that they've got the money available, so-
It will be about $40,000. But again, I doubt that we'll see a bill until April, after April 1st.
Okay.
Then just to get an P O in place to help accompany to place the orders.
One good head to finish, Chief.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Cosman Naruski brought a good point. However, although I agree with him in the sense that this is a very creative, excellent way to increase the safety of our law enforcement and access to information that will hopefully allow you guys to do your job and all of that. There's no free money and this money, although it wouldn't impact taxpayers and the money is in a fund, it's coming out of a fund that I also find near and dear and that is a fund that will allow us to communicate with our constituents about what goes on in the city. And so whenever that fund gets tapped for something other than providing that information to our citizens in a way that I think is underutilized, I get a little nervous and I look at that. But I think that this is an excellent opportunity for the city of Amherst. I fully support it. It pains me to see that cable fund dropped, but in this case, I would absolutely support this and support that emergency. So just to clarify that that is the cable fund that that's being drawn from. Thank you.
Our final comment will come from the auditor, Mr. Kukuba.
I know that you don't want to take it out of that account. However, that account is earmarked for communication and you can't find a better piece of communication to be able to be shared throughout the county for the safety of officers on the street and the safety of others. I mean, this is probably the best communications deal that we could get. Thank you.
I refer first and second to take agenda item, whatever that was, Day 1510, the floor of council with the emergency. All favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven zero. Mr. Naruski?
I'd like to adjourn.
Mr. Jay? First and second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at 7:44.
Hey Meg, give me a hand with this suitcase, will you?
Why are you packing the car? Where are we going?
Giant Eagle!
We're staying over?
What? No, that'd be crazy. Although it would allow us time to get a jump on Giant Eagle's new travel gift card promotion.
Ah, of course. It's all about the fuel perks.
Yeah, and from now through March 11th, we can earn 20 cent fuel perks on select travel gift cards, including Hyatt, Disney, Aeropostale and Steak 'n Shake.
Sounds good, Dad, but you do realize we don't actually have to travel, right?
Hey, whatever happened to spontaneity? Where's your sense of adventure, Meg?
I guess I lost it on our spontaneous road trip to that auto repair shop in Toledo for spring break. Just sitting, waiting, reading labels on oil cans. Good times.
I'm sensing some sarcasm, hmm?
Earning 20 cents fuel perks through March 11th on select travel gift cards. That's another Giant Eagle advantage. Limited time offers, certain restrictions apply. See store for details.
All across America, people are discovering a smart new way to make money, big money, from the internet by not going on the internet. And now you can learn how to do it too with a life-changing free DVD, Profit from the Internet Without Getting Online.
We made a decent offer. Okay. Okay.
The meeting of the Finance Committee took order on the 2nd of March at 7:45 PM. Note that attendance has been taken in the previous meeting and also the excuse, the choosing of the Safety Services Director. We have one item on the agenda, Day 15-11, additional funds for the replacement of a 15 kilovolt electrical distribution line and declaring an emergency. This comes from Mr. Mayor. Would you care to comment?
Yes, if you refer to the pass I gave you, I've got a cover letter which explains the basically the situation. I'll just briefly summarize it. As you know, back in October, we bid this project out and the project came back and when the bids came in, they were 10% over the engineer's estimate, which means by law we had to rebid the project. So we rebid the project in February, just a couple of weeks ago, the bids came back and they were in the guidelines of what the engineer's estimate was. And so what I'm doing is if you go back to the, also your attachment, I have attached the previous legislation that we authorized the expenditure of $1,631, $47.82. And that means to do this project and go ahead, we're going to need $180,424.89 difference. And also, we did not have included in this project eventually a contingency fund. As you know, contingency is always necessary, things that come up that you don't realize during construction and if we don't spend it, hopefully we give it back. So what we're asking for on this project is a total of $380,424.89 more to add to the $1,61, $1,631 originally. Also attached, as you'll see, the engineer's recap of the bids that just came in. You'll see that we will enter into a contract with Hooper Corporation for a contract price of $1,811,472.71 versus their recommendation. And also you'll see attached is the summary that I asked for just previously. And also attached is a letter from John Courtney, our great consultant, who says that basically we are able to pay for this with our reserve and with no detriment to our cash flow. So I'm asking for the emergency legislation on this so we can get this contract signed and so we can start getting the materials on order. And also, if you refer to the recap by the engineer, you'll see that we've got 240-day construction period of time, so I want to get the contract signed so we can start that timeframe going. I'm willing and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Miller back?
Thank you, ma'am chair. Mr. Mayor, when the, was there anything, and I didn't compare the actual initial engineering, and I apologize, to the final bidding process? Was there any certain area that we found that we were really deficient in our initial estimates that would suck up a little of this?
We found out that the first time we bid it out, they were very busy and they increased the price. We recognized that and that's what they told us. The reason the price was so high was they were busy. And when they're busy, they raise the price because they don't really care whether they get it or not. And when we rebid it this time, first of all, the first time we had three bidders. This time we had five bidders. And this new bidder that we're going to award the contract based on your approval is a new bidder. And they're a big company, they come highly recommended and they came in about $200,000 lower than they did the, than the lower price was the first time. So that was the main reason. And also what we did during the bidding process is we increased the construction time and we also increased the time that I entered the order, they bid the job and then I get it passed because I knew I had to come back to council for more money to complete this project. So those are the two, the three items that we had. The busyness of the contractor, we gave more lead time and to get the project processed.
Okay, all right, thank you. There's all, thank you.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you, ma'am chair. We have 2015 and six, the account number 620-5101, 52501. You show a reduction from our 214, 1.9 mil budget to 1.2. Is that, is that still within this new addition?
Yeah, the money I put in, if you remember, I put in the annual budget, I put $800,000 in the capital outlay. When I resubmitted the final budget, I put 1.2 million in, knowing I was going to have to take additional money for the project and for the contingency. But that still leaves us, say you take $400,000, it still leaves you $800,000 in the capital outlay account, which is more than enough.
So we'll have an $800,000 balance after?
Something like that, give or take.
So that 1.9, 214 budget was for this project, but the 215 budget increase, or actually decrease, but still a large amount was because we have these additions. So between the two budgets, that's where this is being paid for?
Seeing that, okay.
I just saw that we had for 2014, a 1.9 million budget, but then it was reduced in 2015 when we're actually doing this project.
That's because I knew I needed, you needed this extra money.
Okay, so the 214 budget's what's paying for this, that's how?
214 and a 215.
And a 215 increase.
1.6 from 2014. One point six from two thousand fourteen and a three hundred and eighty for two fifteen.
Okay.
So we'll combine these together to make the two point oh whatever, let's see, whatever that is.
And the key is, is what I was going to ask, which you beat me to the punch and I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor, was that after these two, whether these two budgets, what they were, it's still going to leave us with eight hundred K balance and that's where I was-
Yes.
So you were, you were going right where I was headed. So I appreciate, you know, cut to the chase, so eight hundred thousand balance, which will allow us to continue with electric upgrades. Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Madam Chair. That's all I have.
Mr. Book of Act?
I'll make a motion to take A fifteen eleven to the floor of counsel with the emergency. Second?
There's a motion and a second to take A fifteen dash eleven to the floor of counsel with the emergency. Is there any other comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, saying nay. Mr. Goodell?
We'll adjourn. Yeah.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Goodell. Do I have a second? Mr. Wunarski? Motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, saying nay. Thank you. We are adjourned.
Serving Amherst and Amherst Township, your hometown television station, Amherst City Cable.